To order this Monday, January 13, 2025, meeting of the Concord City Council. I will just mention that devices are available for the assistance of those who have difficulty hearing in this room. The devices use a transmitter and headphones and allow an individual to personally adjust the volume to their needs. And the device can be obtained at the Concord TV booth, which is in the back of City Council chambers. And Michael is waving his hand in case anyone needs it. So that having been said, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful. Justice for all. Love it. Madam Clerk, would you please, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Here.
Mayor Champlin.
Here.
Counselor Finacy.
Present.
Counselor Foot.
Present.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Counselor Horn.
Here.
Counselor Keach.
Here.
Counselor Kretovic.
Here.
Counselor Kurtz.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor McNamara.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Sausser.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Sekul.
Present.
And Counselor Todd.
Here.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 9, 2024 City Council meeting? Moved and seconded. Any conversation, discussion? Counselor Brown?
Yes, I would just like to add on page 13, Public Hearing Action Number 33, we had a discussion about in support of the Concord Skate Park. A number of counselors spoke in favor of that, and I'd like to acknowledge that in the minutes. So I would simply like to add that a number of counselors spoke in support of this project, which the Concord Skate Park Group has been advocating for since 2020.
Any objections? Do you have it?
I do, yes.
Any other comments or corrections? All those in favor of adopting the minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. We're going to have a very busy agenda tonight. But first, a very pleasurable activity for me in any case. I'd like to ask Don Bruggerman to come on up and join us. Stand there next to Counselor Todd. Counselor Todd is very courteous and welcoming.
He doesn't bother.
I'd like to read this proclamation. This is a proclamation of appreciation for Donald Bruggerman, manager of the Works Cafe. Whereas Concord residents and manager of the work, Concord resident and manager of the Works Cafe, local, located in Concord, New Hampshire, Donald Bruggerman, has demonstrated a longstanding commitment to supporting the community of Concord, New Hampshire, by generously supplying bagels to all election officials and election workers on Election Day. And whereas election officials and workers begin their duties at sunrise and work tirelessly into the early hours of the next day, ensuring the democratic process runs smoothly across all 10 wards of Concord. And whereas these dedicated individuals often face long hours and high-pressure situations. And Don's generous donation of bagels has provided essential nourishment to help them start their day and maintain their energy throughout the extended hours of work. And whereas his consistent acts of kindness have helped create a positive collaborative environment among the election officials, volunteers, and workers contributing to the success of each election held in Concord. And whereas Don's generosity reflects the values of community, service, and civic engagement that are integral to the spirit of Concord. And whereas his commitment to ensuring that those who dedicate their time and effort to upholding the democratic process are recognized and appreciated is a model for others in our community. Now therefore I, Byron O'Champlin, Mayor of the City of Concord, do hereby express our deepest gratitude to Donald Bruggerman for his continued support and selfless contributions to the City of Concord, particularly on election days, and those days when I order a garlic bagel toasted with salmon sprout. This proclamation, which I do not get for free, by the way. This proclamation serves as a formal acknowledgement of his generosity, and we extend our sincere thanks for the impact he has made in our community. Signed Byron O'Champlin, Mayor of the City of Concord, New Hampshire, January 2025. Do you want to say a few words, Don? Say a few words, the floor is yours.
I'd like to be a part of this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Fred's hungry.
Yeah. Where are the bagels? Fred's certain that you're retiring, but no.
It really looks like the morning.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Go. I will make the motion to accept.
Counselor Grady Sexton. I think Counselor Grady Sexton seconded.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Grady Sexton. Yes.
I just have a question. I was looking at item number seven, that Counselor Sausser is recommending to the Energy and Environment Committee. Do you want that to go to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
I would defer to the opinion of the city clerk.
Oh, because I think it may save you a month. Because if it goes to Energy and Environment, then it would probably need to go back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for helping me with that.
You're welcome.
All right. So that will be referred, item seven will be referred to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. All right, okay. Are we ready for the vote? Any other questions?
Your Honor, I'm recusing myself from item 10, 20, and 21, because my spouse works for the police department.
Thank you very much. All right, are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar as presented, please signify by, and amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. That brings us to the public hearing section of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, item 26A.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV, Zoning Code, Chapter 28, zoning ordinance, to further revise certain provisions which were previously modified by ordinance 3168 in August of 2024 pertaining to conditional use permits for obstruction of the State House dome and maximum height limitations in certain portions of the Central Business Performance District and the Opportunity Corridor Performance District.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the councils, specifically these proposed ordinance will allow the planning board to review and provide potential relief to the zoning requirements outlined below via the conditional use permit, which you see contained here. The change is beneficial as one, it will give the planning board control of the flexibility for these design issues, rather than requiring applicants to seek relief of the zoning board adjustment. And two, give the planning board more control and reasonable flexibility over the design considerations, which will allow the city to review development applications in a more cohesive, holistic, and efficient manner. As the conclusion of the November 2024 public hearing, the planning board unanimously recommend the City Council adopt these changes. The board voiced that the proposed ordinance amendments are an improvement over what was previously adopted in August, and these recommended changes provide reasonable opportunity for additional development within the city's downtown Opportunity Corridor, while simultaneously providing reasonable safeguards protecting historic, architectural, and cultural resources, and also protect for public health and safety. The board also believes the attached amendments reasonably address the concerns voiced during the public hearing at the City Council's August 12, 2024 meeting. As such, the planning board recommends adoption of these proposed amendments as presented, as does staff.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on item 26A? Welcome, Mr. Pollak. Please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Contrary to popular opinion, I can be very brief and will do so this evening. My name's Ari Pollak. I'm an attorney with the Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell firm here in Concord. I've been working with Mark Zabrowski through his entity, Zabrowski Associates, to participate in and monitor the discussion relating to zoning amendments for the downtown and the central business district. We were part of the August hearing where the initial amendments were adopted. We were part of the re-referral back to the planning board and their conversation. And we've seen the work product that was described by the manager coming back to the council. In all places, we appreciated the discussion. We think value was added, and we are supportive of the measure that's for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pollak? All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on item 26A? All right. I declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 26B.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 35 Classification and Compensation Plan, Article 35-2 Compensation Plan, Schedule D, Elections Specialist.
Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, the city clerk has requested the addition of an elections specialist position, which will be a permanent, part-time employee working 24 hours per week, desires to create a position to ensure the city proactively, rather than reactively, addresses the election-related responsibilities while improving ward official and staff training, research and implementation of election-specific improvements, assurance of compliance to the growing and evolving legal obligations, coordination to routine voter registration favors throughout the city, ability to review and analyze pending legislation specific to department, while greatly improving the work life and the balance for the staff. Going through COVID with the city clerk was not, was no picnic. So, because in reality, so many folks had to, decided to retire. And she had to bring on all kinds of additional staff, provide all kinds of additional training, did a fantastic job with all the elections since then and previous to that. And I think this does make a lot of sense, and it's something that has really been needed by the organization for a number of years. Somehow, she's been able to keep it together, so to speak. And I think this makes a lot of sense for the community.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Sekul.
I just want to say that what you just said, I don't know how she has been doing it all this time. And for the first time, I volunteered the entire day in just one area. And I will tell you, it's like we had 20 people working in that office. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Comments? All right. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on item 26B? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 26C.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $17,265 to assist the library's mission in providing a variety of equitable services to patrons at the Concord Public Library, and accepting the sum of $17,265 in donations from the Concord Public Library Foundation for this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. I'm City Manager.
Your Honor, exactly. The, your honor, members of the council, the very generous Concord Public Library Foundation has provided a grant to cover several items. The seed library startup, the lit kits for visual learners, 11 new library of things items in storage cabinet for them, display shelving for the juvenile DVDs, and also Lot for kids' books, which are multilingual children's storybooks database, and a Creative Bug website's subscription crafting demos with no wait times and much, much more. So again, another generous donation from the foundation. Recommend you accept.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions for the City Manager? All right, I'll open item 26C to the public, for a public hearing. Would anyone like to testify? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 26C. If it pleases, the City Council would like to combine the public hearing of items 26D and 26E because they are in tandem. Are there any objections? All right, Madam City Clerk, items 26D and 26E.
The first item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for grant funds in the sum of $750,000 to the Community Development Block Grant Fund Program, appropriating the sum of $750,000 to support Catch Neighborhood Housing's redevelopment at 30 East Side Drive, and accepting the sum of $750,000 in community development block grant funds for this purchase. Second item is a resolution adopting an anti-displacement relocation policy statement and procedures in support of the city's community development block grant application to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority to support Catch Neighborhood Housing's redevelopment project at 30 East Side Drive, increasing the affordable housing units from the existing 14 units to between 20 and 24 new affordable housing units to support independent living and housing opportunities, including services for adults with learning and developmental disabilities.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
I'd like to ask Mr. Thompson to come forward and present.
Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. As you know, with the CDBG program, I have a script of required items for Community Development Finance Authority and Housing Urban Development. So, well, further ado, there is a handout in the back of the room for those who are in the audience who are interested in having some additional detail about this project. Community development block grant funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to $500,000 annually is available for economic development projects, up to $500,000 for public facility projects, up to $500,000 for housing projects, and up to $500,000 for emergency activities. Up to $25,000 is available per planning study grant. As the City Council recall, we've approved two of those in the last calendar year. All projects must directly benefit a majority of low, moderate-income persons. The proposal before you tonight is an application for CDFA for up to $750,000 of CDBG-supported housing and/or up to $500,000 in housing funds. Of those grant funds, up to $40,000 will be retained by the city for administrative costs and labor compliance costs and associated with the project. The remainder of the funds will be sub-granted to the Concord Area Trust for Community Housing. Catch will in turn loan funds to a single-purpose entity to be formed that will be controlled by Catch to redevelop their parcel at 30 East Side Drive with a new structure, and increase the total number of affordable housing units from the existing 14 to somewhere between 20 and 24 new housing units that would support independent living and household and housing opportunities, including services for adults with learning and developmental disabilities. This project addresses the goal in Concord's Housing and Community Development Plan of affordable housing that is available for families of low and moderate income and for those with special needs. As it relates to the Anti-Displacement Relocation Assistant Plan, this plan measures under the Uniform Relocation Act that is required for all CDBG projects that involve any displacement or relocation of persons or businesses. If the city were to undertake a CDBG project, which involved displacement or relocation, they would follow this plan. The plan outlines the measures that we would take in order to find comparable suitable housing for persons or businesses displaced or relocated. In anticipation of this project, as units are vacated, they have not been rented out. Of the few tenants that do remain, Catch has been following those URA regulations on relocating them, and will continue to do so through the project's implementation. Happy to answer any questions you have. And Alex from Catch is here if there are any specific questions regarding the project itself.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
I'll now open the, open the public hearing on items 26D and 26E. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify? Mr. Schweitzer, please come forward.
Good evening, mayors, members of the City Council, city manager, and city clerk. I'm Roy Schweitzer, and I have a habit of coming in here and complaining that we're not giving these grants for housing, and now we are. So I think that's wonderful. The bad side of it is that these units are outrageously expensive. If they are going to add this, if they're going to add 10 units, which is the maximum they're adding, that's $700,000 each. For that money, you could go down to Boe, buy a brand-new four-bedroom Colonial. In fact, for the $7 million, you could go buy a whole subdivision and have a whole lot of nice units, huge and everything. So this is kind of very expensive. And I'm not a developer, but it just seems like for the relatively small units, that's a lot of money. I certainly hope they manage to get the full 24 out of it, not just raising it to 20. But I'm just going to take this opportunity to say that the city is missing a whole category of people that need inexpensive housing. That I sent out, which I hope you folks got from the city clerk, the stuff about what is affordable housing. According to HUD, it is affordable housing if it's designed for people that earn $64,500 a year. I mean, I consider that not a poor person, I consider that middle income. So, we need to start looking for the people not at the 80% level of median family income, but at the 30% level of median family income. And as an example, the other night at the zoning board, there was a Laquacious attorney who was yammering about, we have these 600 people working at Emergent Way, and we need this affordable housing. Well, if you look at the median income of the people working at Emergent Way, that's a part-time employee of Market Basket, a part-time cashier or stalker or something. There's no way that the affordable housing they were going to build would be affordable by that median income person there. So they're building units that the people next to them that need them can't afford. We need to start We need to start looking at units that are cheap enough that people at the 30% of median income level can afford. And they need to start being smaller, I guess is what we need. We need an efficiency apartment of 400 square feet instead of the one of these one-bedrooms. I rented those on two different cities, and the answer is yes, they're small, but they were all I needed. And the other thing being that rooming houses, I mean, we have people trying to convert an existing home into a rooming house and, you know, overloading the neighborhood because there's not adequate parking and stuff. We need to start thinking about why don't we add rooming houses to the new developments? Instead of saying these are affordable for someone that makes $64,000 a year, say, one unit of your new thing will be a rooming house that might be affordable for someone that makes $30,000 a year. Because these part-time cashiers may not even make $30,000 a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? All right, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on items 26D and 26E? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing on those items closed. Madam City Clerk, item 26F.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $3,049,000 as a transfer to reserves and authorizing the use of $3,049,000 from fiscal year 2024 general fund, assigned fund balance for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Members of the council, I ask Mr. LeBrun to come forward and present this item.
Welcome, Mr. LeBrun.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for having me. I am very pleased to report that for fiscal year 2024, the city realized a surplus of $1.4 million. As part of the year-end audit, management has allocated $3.7 million to the assigned fund balance account. In this allocation, $100,000 is for overlay, $560,760 is for the budgetary use of fund balance that was used in the FY '25 budget, and this does result in an unassigned fund balance of $15.6 million or 21.6%. That's, the, the city's goal now is 20 and 1/2%, but at the time, it was 18 and 1/2%. So this is above the city's goal. The remaining balance in the assigned fund balance account is $3,049,000, and management recommends appropriating and transferring to trust, fund reserves this amount. Further recommendation is to appropriate $54,000 reserves to support the purchase of furniture, equipment, and training. And these are the two resolutions that are in front of the city council this evening. The next couple pages on the report, just going to highlight the revenues and expenses that were over and under budget. I can go into them in detail if you like, but I'd probably rather wait for questions. The one big item is that revenues were under budget by $394,000. The biggest part of that is that you'll see about six lines down, the use of fund balance is $3.7 million. We don't actually record revenue for that amount of money. So that would put us under budget in revenue because of that, but otherwise, we did excellent as far as other revenues go. When you look at expenses, we're, we're under budget by about $1.8 million. And the main drivers here, our compensation is under budget by $755,000 and fringe benefits by $598,000. So you look at those things and you think about the turnover that we've had, the attrition, all of those things have resulted in that expenses or that revenue and, excuse me, the compensation and benefits being under budget. Combined, both the revenues and expenses, that produces the surplus of $1.4 million. As part of the resolutions that are in front of you and from the assigned fund balance, the recommendation is to transfer funds to the reserves, and that would be the highway reserve, $1.5 million, the technology reserve, $50,000, the equipment reserve, $299,000, recreation, $400,000, human resources, $500,000, and economic development, $300,000. That totals the $3,049,000. And then the next resolution that you'll consider at the next public hearing is $54,000. $44,000 of that is for furniture and equipment, and then $10,000 is for training that would come up during the course of the year. And both of these items are things that aren't typically budgeted during the budget process, so that's why I bring them forward during this time as surplus, which we've done for many years. Let's see. The last section is really the results of the special revenue and enterprise funds. All funds did better than projected. Parking was better by $551,000. Airport was better by $29,900. Golf was better by $101,000. The arena was better by $34,000. Solid waste was better by $454,000. Water was better by almost $34,000. Air wastewater was better by almost $40,000. And the next page of the report, I do have a brief description of what resulted in or why those funds were better than expected, so glad to answer any questions about that. Also new for this surplus report is I did include a copy of the June 30 year-end financial statements. I haven't done that in past years, and I thought it made sense that we start doing that. And these are in the same format as what we provide to the council on a quarterly basis. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. LeBrun? Councilor Brown.
Yes, Mr. LeBrun, could you explain a little bit about the reserve funds? How we, we got the number 400,000 for recreation, 300,000 for economic development? I believe economic development reserve was 100,000 last year. And I, I'm sorry, follow, just, thank you. I'd also like to know, is it possible to create a subcategory within these reserves?
Well, to answer your last question first, I would probably just create a second reserve as opposed to a subcategory. That would probably be the easiest way to manage it. When you look at each one of these reserve accounts, if you think about them, we're kind of like looking forward. So we're trying to help next year's budget or the year after's budget, and we do this on a regular basis. If you think about the highway reserve, putting 1.5 million in, we've put anywhere as from, you know, 900,000, 800,000, a million three, a million five. What that does is it helps next year when we do the FY '26 budget, out of the reserve account, the highway program will be funded. If we didn't have money in that reserve account, we would have to ask the city council to float bonds for it. By doing this, along with other revenue streams that we have coming in, like highway block grant, things like that, we're able to do it without actually going out and doing a bond. So, so we're trying to think ahead to the next year and the, and the year after and trying to create these reserves so you have a relatively steady stream of dollars being able to flow in and out. The technology reserve, you know, that's something that we've been putting money aside together. You know, we have a lot of technology needs throughout the community. They grow on a regular basis. We are going to have some fiber that's going to need to be replaced throughout the city in the coming years. That's going to be, I would guess, half million to 3/4 of a million-dollar project. We're putting money aside here. We also have some money that is set aside for technology reserve from funds that we get from the cable TV franchise agreement. So we're trying to build that up a little bit, so that's a help there. Equipment reserve, you know, we, we purchase things like fire trucks and vehicles and general services. This doesn't cover all of that. It would be great if we could get to that point, but this helps a little bit in trying to use some of that for equipment, for those types of things, or other equipment needs that we have throughout the community, without, again, without bonding it or raising additional taxes in order to do that. Recreation reserve, you know, we have different recreation programs that, you know, we think we're going to have as future needs, so setting some money aside and trying to build that reserve up. So again, you can manage through those changes that we have without having to have as big a spikes in the tax rate. And the same thing goes for the human resources reserves. If you think about the compens, compensation study that's coming, hopefully in the next few months, that will have a cost to it at some point. If we're able to put a couple of years of human resources reserves away, that may be able to use to help mitigate the cost of that program as it starts to get implemented based on what the city council decides. And then economic development reserve, there are funds that are budgeted within the city budget on an annual basis. I think we had $150,000 for the ARX program this year. We had another $30,000 for in-town Concord, and then we have some dollars that we just generally allocate throughout the, the city budget for economic development-related purposes. And putting money into that reserve, again, helps to manage the tax rate overall so that we can use those funds kind of more seamlessly. It provides an opportunity for us to be able to, to do that on an annual basis. If we don't have the reserves, we can't do it.
Follow-up. So, thank you very much for that explanation. So if there is a program and we think this fits within, say, the economic development reserve, that would still have to come before council. Anything that would draw from these reserves would still need to come before council to appropriate those funds.
Any money that would come out of these reserves, the city council has to give authorization for. Same thing with the assigned fund balance, city council has to appropriate.
Thank you.
Councilor Horn.
The significant overage of the revenue of ambulance charges, does that just mean that we had that many more ambulance calls from last year and also our budget?
Yeah, it means that, you know, we had more calls and also the pricing structure, as we change the pricing structure and implementing that pricing structure. But the biggest part of it is just the additional calls that are involved.
Thank you.
Councilor Seku and then Councilor Fantasy.
Mr. Your Honor, I see you combined 26F and 26G altogether, but we are talking about If we take the 54, we don't talk about the $3 million anymore because now we are at 2.995. Am I correct?
I would probably add the 54 to the $3,049,000, so they're two separate resolutions. This, this public hearing is not reflective of the 54,000, but my report is reflective of the 54,000.
Okay, that's where I was going with this. Because based on the way you reported, it's like we have the $3 million, but out of that $3 million, we are taking the 54.
No, the $3,049,000 is one resolution to transfer to reserve. That's one thing.
Okay.
The next resolution that the city will have, the mayor will present a public hearing for, that's 54,000. That's a whole separate public hearing, but it's all part of the same report, so I don't have another report. I could get up and give you, do this again.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify.
I, I, I probably should have combined the two.
Okay.
It, it was an oversight on my part.
Thank you.
Councilor Fantasy.
Can you explain the purpose or the benefit for maintaining our unassigned fund balance? Where we are maintaining it at, I think it's 20 and 1/2% is the, the policy now?
I, I think there's a few things that probably fall into that. The first one is, as we go out to bond for all of the bonded projects that we have out there, the rating agencies look at our unassigned fund balance and what the percentage is as a major marker of the health, the financial health of the community. So that is, that's one very big thing. They look at a lot of things, but that is one very big thing. And if they see that number as being stable or growing some, then they look at that as a very positive result. If they see that number as declining on an annual basis, then they look at that negatively, and it could result in a negative rate on us, which right now, we're, we're a half a point away from the best rate that we can get. We're a double A-plus rating. The best is a triple A rating. So we, you know, as, we would like to not lose that because that in, results in us paying a higher interest rate on the bonds that we borrow. So that's one thing. I think that as we look at this, the pandemic was probably the great example of having a very healthy fund balance and being financially healthy. If you recall, at the beginning of the pandemic, you know, we really didn't know what was going to be happening. We had anticipated that, you know, people weren't going to be able to pay their taxes, that we were going to be struggling as a community. And that year, I believe, the city council passed a budget with a zero tax rate increase. We were able to do that because we had a healthy fund balance, and we were able to allocate dollars from that fund balance in order to help offset the budget. As the result came through, you know, we ended up in a much better position than we really thought we were going to be in. But, you know, it's those types of things that if you have a healthy fund balance, then you're able to weather difficulties with the economy. They will come again, you know? I mean, we've had good times, we've had bad times, but they will come again. And, and having that healthy fund balance helps us to, to maneuver that also.
Follow-up.
Yes, follow-up.
I want to follow up on a question that Councilor Horn had asked with respect to the ambulance charges. They were significantly better than we had budgeted for, and I'm just wondering, was that purely a result of changes in rates, or was there some changes in the manner of collection that we utilized?
It was, it was more, more runs, so that's one thing. Better collection is, is another piece of it, and, and some change in rates. So it was really a combination of factors, but I, I think, you know, more runs is probably the biggest piece of it, so. Thank you.
Councilor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. LeBrun, with regard to Councilor Fantasy's question, let's kind of piggyback on that a little bit. I'm often asked why we just don't take the reserves and return them to the taxpayers by way of reducing tax rates. Can you just speak to the, sort of the delta between a decreased tax rate but an increased bond interest payment and, and how that's advantageous to us?
So, I mean, it's like, it's like any business or even our own personal finances, right? You know, if we take everything we have out of our savings account and go spend it and create a, a situation where we're going to have ongoing expenses, then, and, but we've taken all the money out, instead of earning more, we've taken all the money out of the bank in order to do it. The following year, we end up in a tough spot. The city's the same way, right? So if we have a $15 million unassigned fund balance, if we were to take $15 million, reduce the taxes in the upcoming year, that would be great for that year. I mean, you know, everybody would love to pay less in taxes. Heck, I would too. But what would happen is the following year, now we still, especially if you want to keep the same level of services, the following year, you're going to have a big tax rate increase because now you've got to make up what you just took out of there, and then you're going to have additional compensation, additional health insurance, additional expenses every place else. So now you're kind of getting a double whammy. So you're, you're much better off to manage it on an ongoing basis. The past few years, you know, we have been using some dollars out of fund balance in order to balance the budget, using that in a managed approach, I think, is a very smart thing to do. We try to reduce that amount, you know, as much as we can, but, you know, it's one of those things that instead of raising the tax rate more, if we use a little bit of fund balance in order to help offset the tax rate to keep it at a reasonable level, you know, that's the, I guess, the prudent thing to do. But the city council can obviously make whatever decision they want to make.
Great explanation. Thank you. Thank you. I'll just piggyback on Councilor Fantasy's question as well, just to make the public comment that I know a lot of people think our firefighters are firefighters, and they are. They do a great job when necessary in firefighting. Their job entails much, much, much more. By far, I think, Chief, you can just nod your head if I'm right, way back there in the back of the room, the majority of their calls are actually emergency service calls in terms of ambulances.
85%, 85%?
73.
73. Yeah, I was going to say 70%.
I was going to say 85.
But I just think it's important to note that because people wonder, you know, about our, our, our fire department and the service that they provide, and it's important to understand that these days, that ambulance service and emergency services, car accidents, things like that, take up a very large percentage of the time that they spend out on calls. So, thank you. Any other, yes.
Well, if I could add, one of the reasons that, of course, you added an ambulance company, now that doesn't cause more accidents, but, but you, the services, it proves the services. But, you know, when you're, when you're a city that goes from a population of 45,000 during the day, during the night to 90,000 during the day, it, you want, you want a mechanism to be able to collect the dollars of, of the times that the ambulance is responding to calls. And if the property taxpayers were picking all that up, and you were picking that up through ambulance calls, the emergency services, then the taxpayers would be paying for all the out-of-town services that would go on for folks who are not paying taxes here. So actually, this does help keep the tax rate down. The more you can collect in, in ambulance fees, the less there's going to be paid in property taxes. Because, because we, we do need the revenues to be able to support those ambulance companies.
Councilor Credit.
Only because you said that can I ask a question, and if you don't know the answer, that's okay. Yeah, that's right. Mr. 85 percenter. Isn't the state prison the one area in the city that uses ambulance service most in the entire city? Are they, their fair share?
Let's say, yeah, yeah, particularly when you have two of them there, right? You have two of them there.
I'll just take the slight nod in the back of the room as a yes.
Oh, yes. I was going to say the state house, but it's, but I think, I think it's, I do think it's the ambulance.
Let's not confuse the two.
Yeah.
Any other question? Any other serious questions? Mr. LeBrun, sorry, I started this. All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor.
I'd just like to compliment your efforts. I think what you're doing here is you're just trying to mitigate any potential saw-tooth budgets that we may realize. So, you know, I've been, I had nothing to do the other day, and I read the arena advisory report, and, and we could be in for a million bucks to, to, to make that facility whole. So there's always things that are, that we don't real, you know, that we don't budget for and we don't realize until we need to take action. So I applaud your efforts. Is there a state low and medium, or state low and maximum that's recommended by the, any of the agencies as far as the maximum low that we should have in the reserve fund?
It's not a... It's not a state recommendation, but the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum of 8% up to 17 and 1/2% is their recommendation. We think that the 17 and 1/2% is probably a little bit lower than what we would like to see it, especially if we want to have a stronger bond rating. Because of the way that, the other factors within our community, we need a higher fund balance in order to maintain a strong bond rating. If we went down to 17 and 1/2%, we would probably end up with a reduced bond rating because of that.
Thank you again. I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say that, you know, it's my efforts, you know, here, reporting this and all of the accounting posts, but it really is everybody in the city that, you know, works to make all this happen. It's not me sitting in my office.
Counselor Brown.
I just want to echo Counselor Foot's. I have recently connected with Mr. Lebrun a number of times, early mornings, emails, meetings, and I appreciate him patiently explaining our financial health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lebrun. I'll now open the public hearing. To anyone in the audience who would like to testify, would anyone like to testify on item 26F? Mr. Schweitzer.
Hello, I'm still Roy Schweitzer. And Mr. Keach may remember, last year, I was talking about ambulance service prices and there has been an update from the legislature. Last year, the Senate tried to insist that insurance companies pay triple or more the rate that the Medicare paid for ambulances, even though over half of the ambulance calls typically were Medicare. And the House didn't go along with that and appointed a study committee instead. And the report of the study committee is now out, that they think that basically double the Medicare rate is probably more appropriate for the insurance companies. We still have a problem in that the reason this is necessary is that Medicare is vastly underpaying the cost of ambulance services. And part of the problem is what is the cost of an ambulance service? We have those, you know, gentlemen sitting around the fire station, and are they being paid as waiting for an ambulance call or waiting for a fire call? So what is the real cost of, you know, maintaining an ambulance? So it's ambiguous. Anyway, this is something that's going to come up in the legislature this year. And I'm sure that, you know, the nonprofit ambulances and the for-profit ambulances have different takes on this, but it's going to be an issue of what finally gets passed as to what the insurance companies are required to pay. And I think that whatever that number is, it will be fairly easy to collect that much from them and it'll be fairly hard to collect more. So I don't know how that relates to what the city is currently charging, but anyway, that's what's happening. And you may have read a little bit about this in the monitor if you read all the stuff there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? Thank you very much. Anyone else like to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing on 26F closed. Madam City Clerk, item 26G.
It is a, excuse me, it's a resolution appropriating the sum of $54,000 in the general fund for furniture, equipment, and training and authorizing the use of $54,000 in reserve funds for this purpose.
Thank you, City Manager. I assume it's the same report?
Same report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for the City Manager on this item? Counselor Brown.
Yes, in, we're purchasing chairs and office furniture. Are we using one supplier? Is there bidding? Can you explain why, how we came to this $44,000 for office furniture?
We go out to, we have a, we have a contract that we have awarded, and we actually go out and all the, pretty much, I think, all buy from the same, from the same, with the exception of specialized equipment, buys from the same supplier for this. So we approve that so everybody isn't out running around. Unless they can get a real special deal on something, then we'll make an authorization for an exception to that. The training is, as you're, as, and I usually do this during budget, the training piece is related to just a $10,000 available to the entire organization for different things that staff comes forward with ideas that are not in the individual budget. So during one of the last reset, during the last recession, the city council stripped a lot of the training. You hear me say this every year during budget. And we're slowly trying to put those pieces back into the individual departments, but we're not there yet. So we have a, one category of $10,000 in the manager's budget, which when the department comes forward with an idea for training that would be valuable to the organization, we make a decision and say, okay, we'll authorize you to go get that training for those dollars and all come down to one, this one.
I believe that we did this, the same amounts last year. Can you, do you, what was it spent on?
$10,000.
Yeah, what, what $10,000?
That was the, oh.
What training?
I don't have, I don't have.
Okay, so any department could apply for it?
Any department, right. So in generally, what happens is many times, and many times it's $800 here or $700 there, and somebody needs a registration and maybe some travel expenses to get to that. Many of the departments are really good working with their associations and getting grants or getting discounts on different programs, and then we'll send them to those.
Thank you.
And, and, as you know, the, the more turnover you have in staff, generally, particularly basics in, say, in particularly code or in community development, you end up having to make sure those folks are up to the latest set of skills, so.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open the, I'll open item 26G to the public for a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 26H.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $150,000 for the Concord Public Library chilling unit replacement sub-project, CIP, number 551, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the amount of $150,000 for this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
And members of the council, so in 2003, you brought air conditioning to the Concord Public Library. They didn't have air conditioning before that and now that, yes, I know, and they, they had very large fans and loud, loud fans, that's right. And it's, we're now reaching the end of the life, the life cycle of those units. There are four units that are up on the roof. These dollars will buy us about three to five years in the repair of those units. So if you do want air conditioning this year, then you vote for these dollars. If you don't want air conditioning in the library, then you vote against these dollars. The reason, you could spend a whole lot more, but if you plan to do something with the library in the next three to five years, then it wouldn't make sense to invest those dollars. If you don't plan on doing anything with the library, say, five years, over the next five years and just stay with what we have, then we'll, we would do something much more expensive than this. So my thought is, by a three to five years, city council can make a decision about what to do with improvements or expansion to the library and we'll have air conditioning this up.
Any questions for the City Manager?
I have a question because you said if we are not planning to do anything with the library, and my understanding is that they have been asking for renovation, renovation, and we have been going out. So this is really, if we invest this much money, you are saying that we are looking at five years before we can even think about, because this is going to fix some of the problem that the library is facing.
May I?
Yes.
So, so it, let's say, let's say tomorrow, you decided you wanted to do a major renovation and/or an expansion to the library. It's going to take you probably three years at least to get there. This will buy you the time over three to five years to, to get there. If, if you decide somewhere over the next year or two or three that you're not going to do those improvements, then we'd come back with a major renovation plan to the library, which will cost, add, add a bunch of zeros to this and living with it. So essentially, this just buys you the time to make that decision about what you want to do with the library.
I just want to, oh, sorry, thank you. I just want to highlight, we know there is forces that are trying to do this work and that has been doing a great, amazing work, fundraising, ready to go to this. By allocating this fund, we are not saying to them, we don't want to hear from you next year or the year after.
No, you're saying just the opposite, is that we, we have a stopgap measure, which you're putting in place for air conditioning, and we, you need to work with the city council over the next couple of years and so the community can make a decision whether, what to do with the Concord Public Library.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the City Manager? Right, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on item 26H? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 26I.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $40,000 for conducting illegal drug-related investigations and accepting the sum of $40,000 in grant funding from the New Hampshire Department of Safety for this purpose.
Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, the, there is no requirement for any city matching funds.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Is there anyone in, I'll open the public hearing on item 26I. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 26J.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $16,000 for the purchase of equipment to assist the Concord Police Department and the Central New Hampshire Special Operations Unit in search and rescue operations and accepting the sum of $16,000 in grant funds from the New Hampshire Department of Safety for this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, there's no requirement for any matching city funds for this grant.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing on item 26J. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing on item 26J closed. Madam City Clerk, item 26K.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $40,000 in the general fund for diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, and belonging work and authorizing the use of $40,000 from the general fund unassigned fund balance for this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
You know, members of the council, the, the committee, the DEI JB Committee is starting to work with a consultant and would like to enter, have this dollars available and these services available to them. I mean, this is the cost of phase one of the request and also have additional $15,000 for additional potential work or potential phase two, if the, if the committee believes it, it would like to go in that direction.
Thank you. Counselor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Manager, if, in fact, they came back for phase two, would that require additional authorization by council or is this inclusive of the total amount?
Could I go a little bit in depth? So the phase one, it was put out, when the RFQ was put out, was for $25,000. And that is what the, the initial cost would be. I put in an additional $15,000 for, for flexibility. The consultant, when they submitted their RFQ proposal, said phase two would cost about $15,000. So there's one way you could spend the additional $15,000. However, it's up to the committee to decide whether or not what they want to do, if they, if they want to do a phase two, and what they want to do under phase two. So they would have that $15,000 available to them to move forward without having to come back and go through the public hearing process to do that. Or you could simply say, or they could simply say, add $25,000, we're done, and the money just goes back to surplus or goes back to fund balance. Or you could change this and say, hey, do the $25,000, but before you go to phase two, we would like you to come back and give us a report to the full city council before you authorize, authorize, even though the money would be available, before you authorize them to go forward with phase two. So you have, you have several options of what you could do.
Great, thank you. Follow up?
Thank you, Your Honor. Maybe this is a question for you, Mr. Mayor, or someone from the DEI Committee, but I have to say, when I saw the polished reports about the cash cow website and the rest of that, it raised a little bit of pause on my behalf. I'm very much in favor of the DEI work. I just want to make sure it's done correctly. And my take on that website was it very much looked like the consultant was very good at marketing. And I just want to be clear that he does have some strengths in this field. And could someone just talk about the process as how he was selected?
Sure. I think the City Manager might be the more appropriate person to talk about the process we went through because it included both the DEI JB Executive Committee, which was Counselor Creditevic, Counselor Seku, and myself, but also city staff working through the kind of the purchasing process that we go through. So, Mr. City Manager.
So the, the RFQ was put out on behalf of the city. We received, if I recall, three proposals the first time. The, the city decided that it'd be, the mayor, it would be a good, and I thought, and I agreed, that'd be a good idea if we could get a proposal from somebody in New Hampshire. So to put, to put that out, we, so we ended up with a fourth that came in. We took those results, had them reviewed by the, I'm going to call it the core committee, the core committee of the DI JB Committee, and they narrowed it down to three. We then interviewed city staff, then interviewed those three groups, and all, all, asking exactly the same questions, going through the, those. Brought those results back to the core committee of the DEI JB group. They chose, it was rankings, they chose who they thought was first to have us go out and negotiate with, the, which was the racial equity group, which the contract. They, when they submitted their proposal, we then opened the, because they were, the, it was the, when you do a qualifications, you have the qualifications and then you have the cost. There are two separate documents. And you don't open the costs until you agree who, who's going to do the work. When we opened the proposal for the cost, it was right in line with what the RFQ was, which was $25,000, which is why it's $25,000. And we went forward from there. The, after the committee said, okay, that's, that $25,000 meets what the requirement was that was in the RFQ, we took a look at the credentials of the, the group who was there. They have very strong credentials, particularly working with communities like us and actually a bunch of larger organizations doing this type of work. Now, if you remember, the RFQ was specifically about, it had two pieces. One, they wanted someone with DEI JB background, but also they wanted, they weren't looking for a consultant, they were looking for a facilitator. Someone to do the listening sessions, someone to draw, be able to draw the public out and have processes in place and experience in place, where they've been able to work not only with large groups, but also work with individuals if individuals weren't comfortable in large groups and actually whether doing it in person, both in person and doing it by Zoom, depending on what the individuals who wanted to participate needed, met all those criteria, and then we move forward. And then we have all that together, come forward and appropriate the dollars to be able to execute that, that work.
Thank you very much.
Could I add one thing?
Absolutely.
So the, and the DEI, the, the city's council's DEI JB committee, which has 17, 18 folks in it. They have had, they had one discussion with here, with the consultant through a Zoom call, and what that entailed was really an introduction of the consultant to the committee, and then the committees explaining who they are as individuals and what their expectations were to the consultant. And then the next thing would be to actually get into the program of what was in the, what was in the, the contract.
Thank you.
Counselor Seku.
No, Amanda, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, thank you, Your Honor. Did the, could you tell me if the committee had the opportunity to fully vet the candidate and discuss the background, including the cash cow enterprise that the consultant has been publicizing?
Did the committee have the opportunity?
Yeah.
Yes.
They did. They discussed that.
No, 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 that, I, they had the opportunity. What they asked is that we look, that staff look at the experience related to them and who their recommendations were. But I generally, I'll just tell you from my approach to think, when somebody gives me their, who they, who they want, you know, their own recommendations about who they want us to talk to, that's nice. But I prefer to go and talk to other people who may have the experience. This group here has done a tremendous amount of work with our neighbors in the South of Massachusetts, and those are the folks that I talk to. And it's, so not only, it's not only the Mass Municipal Association, but met, but several of the communities in there, the people that I have experienced talking to. And they were, they were very pleased with the services provided.
Counselor Seku.
I just want to say thank you, Amanda and Keach. I think it's very important when these things come, especially when we were going through this, we were not aware of this, right? It came after. But we have a city, well-qualified people that we give direction. And thank you, Tom, and the staff that went through. And I'm sitting here to tell you all that you shared, we didn't take And I'm sitting here to tell you all that you shared, we didn't take this lightly. And when we send it back, to make sure we got the right person to do the right work, as any other committee, we trusted our city staff to do the diligent, do the work, do the background, do whatever they have to do and bring the recommendation. And based on the recommendation we had, we all agreed that this is the most qualified candidate. And when you have a job posting, we talk about equity here, you go with the most qualified candidates that work with municipality, that do the same type of work we are looking to get done. And I also appreciate that you took the time to explain that it's a contract. We have a contract with somebody and we divide it in those top categories. Whenever things come to be, the more you work with somebody, the more you learn about their qualification. Because at some point, we all have to also look at, of course, their background, but for what they have done. I want to say here that this consultant, I 100% think that they will get the work done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Krenovic.
I'll wait until after the public hearing. Thanks.
All right. Comments, yeah, comments can come after the public hearing before the, we take action. Do you have a question, Counselor?
Yes, I do. Mr. City Manager, have you thought, just as you described how this consultant would be working, is this a role or is this something that could, our social worker could serve in that role, someone who is already embedded in our community, who has connections? Is that something that the social worker or their intern could be tasked with, could do?
Well, why don't I read to you what the task is and then you can, and then you can decide what you, amongst, I think you're, what you're really looking for, or at least what was expressed to us, when we put together the RFQ that went out, what you were really looking for was someone who can facilitate and work with all different groups and bring out that, the experience that people have had. So, let me, let me tell you what the, what the, what, what does the $25,000 buy you, right? And I can, I can, I give you, I could hand it to you. I don't know, I just started reading, started reading it to you. It's very short, it's all I want, it's all I need, sorry. I think there's enough there for everybody. So, I'll start. So, the idea is have a foundational review of the city project team and the DEI JB Committee will do initial planning meetings, review existing compliance reports, previous climate surveys, all the work that's been done in the past, understand current internal environment, review general operations and strategic priorities, strategic plans and discuss the city's DEI JB vision. This really is with the 18 or so members on the committee. Step two, facilitate foundational DEI JB foundational training sessions. And that's what the, what's what the committee has expressed in the past, they want some training on this, on this, so they can express this to the committees and whatnot. Conduct focus groups, which was a big part of the facilitation skill set, and report a summary. And then, the DEI JB Committee and the Board Committee will have strategic planning sessions. So, that was their response for the $25,000. Then, you can see on their Phase Two down below, that's what they suggested would be the next steps. But I, when I talked to the consultant, I said, well, you need the, really, the committee to go through the process and determine whether those are the exact steps that the group wants to go through. And on the, and I don't have copies for this for you, for all of you, and you'll thank me for that. So, this was, this was the Phase One request for proposal that went out, that was reviewed by the committee. Facilitate community-wide listening sessions and take input regarding personal and professional experiences. Provide training to raise awareness of the importance and value of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Recognize bias and how it affects the way people perceive, evaluate, and react to others. Educate city leaders about their responsibilities to promote DEI JB and prepare them to hold courageous conversations, we purposely put that word in there, across lines of difference and share best practices. Increase knowledge to develop informed empathy, respect, and mutual care and collaborate with the DEI JB Committee to help finalize draft purposes and objectives, DEI JB boards and committee norms, and develop the committee's activities for fiscal year 2025. Phase Two is then when the committee, working with a consultant, then does the training sessions with the boards and committees throughout the organization. So, your 54 boards and six ad hoc committees. That was, that was the idea. So, so what you have in front of you is the response to that Phase One that I just read.
Mr. City Manager, did I hear in there that the primary focus here is our boards and commissions, boards and committees, rather?
Yeah, so the, so essentially, integrate DEI JB principles into board and committee procedures and protocols. That was really one of the major focuses.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, my follow-up was after this, the Phase One, the Phase Two happens and there's recommendations, where would the money come from for these recommendations? You know, how, where would we, those funds be allocated from?
Oh, you.
Whether it's, it's meetings after the consultants, you know, we want to have listening gatherings, he's going to, or they would recommend something, where do we draw those funds from?
You would, in the past, what, well, let me go back to the history because some of you weren't here for this. The city council in the fiscal year '24 budget appropriated $140,000 for this work. And because it's gone through this long process of trying to hire somebody and decide what the RFQ should look like and have different organizations be able to bid on this, June came by, and when June comes by, June, we get to June 30th, all that money goes back into fund balance. So, the money is no longer available to spend. So, that's why you have a public hearing tonight to appropriate the 25 or 40,000 or whatever you want to appropriate for that. If you want to go beyond that, then you would have to either do a, put, something put in the budget, add it to the budget, which you've done in the past, you've done it during the budget hearings, or you would have to come in with a special appropriation after budget is done. And usually, you use fund balance for something like that to appropriate dollars. So, anything in addition to the 25 or 40, whatever you wanted to do, you would have to go through the whole process all over again.
Okay, thank you.
Appropriation and there's funding.
Counselor Curtis.
Yes, thank you. Just to clarify, I believe I understand, but I want to make sure I do and that folks in attendance tonight or watching at home understand, within this document and this conversation, when you say "the city," you mean the DEI JB Committee, boards and commissions, what we think of as the sort of outward-facing city entities, as opposed to the work that city staff has already been doing on DEI JB? That's a completely separate project that has been in progress for several years and is not connected to this, excuse me, candidate or proposal, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And what, what I believe, probably the best way, if you decide to do this, which you have expressed all the interest for a year and a half, that this is what you want to do, then, then I would act as the liaison, you know, to bring reports to the city council and say, here's what the internal city organization is doing so that everybody's aware of that. And that way, the DEI JB Committee of the advisory committee, I should, maybe I'll just start saying advisory committee, to that, is aware of what's going on internally in the organization and can relate that to their work.
Follow-up?
It's a different question.
All right, question.
Okay, thank you. And this may be more for the mayor or someone who sits on the committee. I'm curious, within Phase One, if we have any details under facilitate community-wide listening session slash focus groups, any distinctions that could be made or specifics about this process to help us understand why we might want to fund this as opposed to moving forward? The city has held listening sessions, so looking for like, is this building on, is it going somewhere, and what way is it distinct from what we have done? Do we have a sense of that?
We had listening sessions, but they were not facilitated, they were not structured. You know, the city clerk, I believe, took very, very good notes about them, but that was really only one phase. And part of this, this contract would be to have some additional listening sessions that are facilitated so we can get the maximum value out of them. And also, conduct focus groups. And focus groups, for those who have not been in the public relations field, which is, which uses them very highly, focus groups identify and invite a specific small group of people. And I would, I would imagine that these would be people from various demographic groups that we, whose input we would like to receive. And they sit down with an interviewer and with a note taker and with a third person who's an observer, who basically, you know, might say, you know what, that's an interesting point that you made, Mr. Smith, let's dig a little deeper into that, let's see what really is behind that. And that would, the, those, that focus group would be synthesized into a report and the report would be provided, you know, indicating who, you know, what the general tones and what the discoveries were from that group relative to the goals of the, of the DEI initiative.
Thank you.
Does that, does that hold?
Yes, very much, thank you.
Counselor Foote.
As for the city manager question, relative to the facilitator, does the city have any other boards or committees that we pay a facilitator or a private group to facilitate any other committee in the city of Concord?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Are you aware of any other community in the state of New Hampshire that's going to pay?
Do I have to testify? Have I now? Follow-up, Counselor.
Thank you.
I, I believe, I believe at one time, there were some school districts that were doing something like this, but I, but I was not, not part of it and I never read the reports or anything that came out of it. So, I can't say that, New Hampshire now, I, I can't think of, I can't.
Counselor Krenovic.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, when we did the Main Street Project, did we not hire a marketing consultant to help our committee market the changes downtown? So, I think Concord has a history of doing this. Yeah?
Hire, hire a marketing person? Yes, we hired a marketing person, but I wouldn't call, I was using the word facilitator because that's what, that's what I was asked. But yes, oh, we've hired, we've hired plenty of consultants in the past to work on, on things with us. You know, we're hiring a consultant to work on Memorial Field, we've hired consultants to do planning shirets for Canal Street Park, there's all kinds of, all kinds of examples of that.
Follow-up? Do we see this, do we see this facilitator's duties sunsetting at some point?
I, I would think what would hap, may I?
Yes, you may.
So, I'm, I'm kind of out of my league here because I'm doing my own DEI JB thing and this is, I'm, I'm helping out. So, the, in this, what I, what I would envision happening would be, there'd be a report back from the DEI JB Advisory Committee to the city council saying, here's what we've found and here's where the avenues we'd like to explore and we're, and there's some training sessions that we want to do with some of the boards and commissions, maybe some of the, maybe the more power, I'm going to use the word powerful ones, you know, planning board, zoning board, the ones that actually are making decisions that impact the community dramatically at large. And we're going to want to do that training with those groups. However, you may, you may find that there's a training module simply that can be put together that, that those folks can actually look at and you don't need actually a paid consultant for that. So, I can't, I can't envision, I don't know enough about what they're going to do to say, here's the, here's the, what the product's going to be and whether or not you need to go further. I do know, when you, when the city council appropriated the $140,000 to do that, the thought that it was going to be a multi, you know, not multi-year, but many months to do this. This, the idea of this was, we had hoped to have, if everything had gone along in its proper frame, to have something done by February. I don't think it's going to be done by February. The reason, by February, so that way they could come back and report to the city council and you could look at it as part of your upcoming budget and say, hey, there's some additional pieces we need here or we're all set and we don't want to do it. So, that way you wouldn't have to do it outside the budget cycle. So, I don't know whether or not it's going to be an additional.
I can answer that.
Recommendation.
And I will. If you look at the, at the budget that the city council or city manager, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Fowler, keep changing your title. If you look at the second, you know, if you look at the very last item, strategic planning, data-driven metrics for measuring, monitoring, and managing DEI JB, identify best practices for developing DEI JB scorecards, metrics, key performance indicators, and understand what to measure and how to measure DEI JB. In the conversations that we've had with Mr. Byrd, the intent has always been that at some point, you know, his firm leaves the DEI JB Advisory Committee or Steering Committee with the tools and expertise to basically fly on its own and, and continue the work and monitoring. Not that this would be a consultancy or a facilitation that would go on ad infinitum, that there would be, you know, there would be a date certain down the road, you know, and I don't know what that date certain is going to be, it depends on how the work, I think, develops, but the idea is indeed that there will be an endpoint, if that answers your question.
And lastly, does the city continue to be a firm of action, equal opportunity employer?
Yes. We're, we're actually at the, at the forefront of that.
We are.
We are. We're one of the first to, Jen's here, she can, she can list off all the, whether it's working in a recovery workplace, I think we were the, probably the fir, one of the first in the state to do that in terms of a lot of our programs for, for different, we're, we're right at the forefront of those and we've always, we always have been. So, this, that's why the focus of this is to focus on the boards and committees of the, the organization and their, their interrelationship with the rest of the community.
Counselor Curtis and then Counselor Brady Sexton. Counselor Curtis, did you have anything? Counselor Schultz.
I'm sorry. It's okay. We'll figure this out by the time, yeah. My question is, didn't a lot of this, what this was going to become and what the current council is talking about predate this council? In other words, I'm seeing heads shaking, yes. So, to, maybe to your point, I would think some of what was looked at really predates you and me being here, if that's at all helpful.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brady Sexton.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, has, so, has the staff gone through foundational DEI training?
Yes.
And extensive training?
Yes. We've been at this for quite a while.
And has the capability of training others through our HR department?
Well, let me give you, can I?
Yes, you may.
So, let me give you an example of what we're working on this, this past week. So, what, what we've done is, and of course, we're using this as a very voluntary operation and we've asked any employees who want to participate can participate during working hours, getting paid for it. And the idea was, we're setting, setting up in Jen's, one of the leaders in this, is employee resource groups and three of the ones that we're focusing on is, and is the women in the workplace and setting, you know, really looking at it from the standpoint, are we a woman-friendly workplace in terms of all the, you know, demands that are put on women and, and we're not talking about the, in society, you know, LGBTQIA plus-plus group and also a multicultural group. So, we're looking at, and we're trying to see and try to determine, is there enough interest within the organization, particularly to focus on those three? And then, I would like to go into a group for neurodiversity, I'd like to go into veterans, all the, all different groups. And if you could, and if you think about it from the standpoint of, are we an employee-friendly workplace for those, for those interests, I'll use the interests as the right word, but interest, but also, when we're dealing with our customers, are we also interacting in a way that, you know, is sensitive to what their needs are? So, you know, do we as an organization have the tools, the resources, you know, to be, to have equity with everybody in the community? You don't know until you ask the questions and that's why we're asking the questions.
Follow-up?
Follow-up.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is why we, that why the committee feels that there's a need to spend $5,000 on foundational DEI JB training when we have our own HR department who's gone through extensive training, is on the forefront of doing this work? And also, we have a DEI JB committee that has, what, 18 people around the table that have diverse backgrounds, but also are leaders in the field? So, I guess, what is the missing piece that I'm not understanding here?
I, I think I could answer that. I would say it's, it's, it's to get everybody on a common page and, you know, with the same facilitator that's going to be working on the rest. You're, you're right. I mean, our, our city staff is extremely qualified. I'm not sure whether or not they, they would be able to fit that into their schedule. I'm getting a shaking head from our Director of HR, but I think part of it, though, is, is this is a process of working with the facilitator and making sure and making sure that everybody under, everybody's definitions and understandings are similar and that everyone's on the same page as we move forward to more public-facing, you know, work that the committee would do.
Quick follow up?
Sure.
I guess I'm trying to then understand, if we want to all be on the same page and have a similar background, so is this person going to be coordinating with the people who have given education to the city staff so that we truly are, as a full community, as well as staff, are receiving the same type of training and education?
I, I don't know what type of training and education this consultant is going to be doing versus what we've been at. I got to assume there's a lot of overlap associated with that. But ours, we're, we're pretty far down the road doing this. I don't, I don't know if, I can't, I don't know where the individual members of the boards and committees in the city are in terms of this. They, this may not be a passing thought to some people and some people may be, this is the forefront of their mind every time they make a vote on something. I just don't, I just don't know.
One last follow up.
Sure.
Thank you. Was there any consideration from the community about expanding the contract with people who are doing the DEI JB work with the city staff to do the work with the larger community?
Yes.
So there's continuity and there was no interest?
No, there was interest, but there wasn't capacity.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I think that's, when you're dealing with many of these organizations and I'm just going to cut, broad brush, these are relatively new organizations that have been working on much of this trading. And a lot of this comes from the education field and that now being extrapolated out into private businesses and, and local governments. And you can see kind of what's happening in the private business section. It's all being washed away inevitably right now.
That's right.
I think there's a lot, I think there's, there's value from what we're doing at the city piece, because there's so many different avenues and then we serve so many different missions and so many different people, and that's always changing, there's a real value for us to be doing it. And it's just, it's an extra initiative that everybody's put on and it's really inexpensive. We did, we, you appropriated the dollars in the last budget to do it. But it really is like a trading, it's training like any other training. It really is for, for us. I don't know, now, when you're dealing with boards and commissions who are volunteers who come and go on a regular basis on committees, I don't know, I'm not sure how that's going to work. But I think there, there is a, there is a vision and a, I don't know, a mission that those boards and committees can have that are cognizant of, you know, these values. It's really the values that I think that they could, they could get some benefit from, from, from going through the process. And again, it doesn't have to be a long, for us, for us, it's evolving because we're, we were starting from scratch as employees. But I think as, if you look at the 18 members on the committee or whatever, they're, 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 they live this, they're in this all the time, so.
Right. Thank you so much.
Counselor Kurtz.
No.
I thought you had a question. I'm sorry. Counselor Fantasy.
I had a question for the City Manager. I think I heard you say that for city staff, it's a voluntary program?
Yes.
I guess my question to the mayor, and I don't know if you've thought about this at this point, but is your expectation that any sort of trainings would be voluntary for the boards and commission?
We can't force people to participate in the training. I'm hoping that boards and commissions or, you know, would be willing to spend the time and do it. But right now, I think we're still trying to get our arms around exactly what that would look like, Counselor. It's a great question. But, you know, you know, our, our boards and committees are voluntary and, and, and that's one of the strengths of our, of our system, I think. So, you know, we would encourage people, but, you know, we wouldn't, you know, and we would try to get the highest participation rate possible in any, in any training that took place. But part of this is to leave the Steering Committee, I think, with the metrics, with the, the sense of, how do we keep this going forward? Because as you know, our committees are always changing because we have new people coming in. So this is to leave us with the tools to move forward in, in the future. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open item 20, excuse me, item 26K to the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? I'll also mention to the counselors that you received four letters, four emails in your packet, a public comment regarding this. Would anyone like to testify? Welcome and please identify yourself.
I hope everyone can hear me. Good evening, Mayor Champlin and members of the City Council and City of Concord staff. My name is Ani Malakai and I am actually the Chair of the DEI JB Committee and, well, let me clarify, the Steering Committee. So there's a, an initial group that will be looking at and working with the facilitator to come up with what our guidelines are, what our strategies are, and how we plan to move this forward. I think at this point, most of the questions that I might have an answer to, I think you've already asked those and they've been answered, really the nuts and bolts of it is, we have not begun meeting yet. So some of the questions that you're asking are the things that we will be working out to make sure that we have deliverables, that we have answers to those questions. And making sure that each person that's on the, the committee, the Steering Committee, has an opportunity to share from their path. You have people who are new Americans, at one point they were, they're not now, but people who are refugees, new Americans. You have folks who have disabilities, either a parent of a person that's, that has a disability or someone that's disabled themselves. So you, and someone from our seniors are really smart, wise people. And so you have a variety of people that are, that were chosen and agreed upon to sit on the Steering Committee. And so the hope is that we can come together and agree in one voice to help set the stage for the work that will go forward. I think there was a question over here, I think it might have been you, Counselor Fantasy, that asked about, or someone asked about future. That's an excellent question and maybe out of this could come something in writing or something that's a training module that can be a part of what people do when they sign up, when they're sworn in on a particular committee, that not only do you have a book that talks about the rules and, and regulations and what your, what the expectations are for you in your role, but it would also have information on what it is that we figured out that you all will agree upon once we are done with this process. So hopefully I have stumbled through enough, but I'm certainly happy to take any questions you might have and I'll do the best I can to answer.
Counselor Kurtz and then Counselor Brown.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight. Sort of related to Counselor Brady Sexton's earlier comment about those 18 people on the Steering Committee and their experiences that they brought to the table. As the Chair, could you share why you believe, or I'm assuming that you do believe that the facilitator is useful, but please tell us, do you believe the facilitator would be useful? And if so, why would this individual be necessary or helpful, given the lived experiences and knowledge brought to the table by the residents who have volunteered to sit on the committee?
Sure. That's a, that's a great question and thank you for that. I think first, excuse me, first and foremost, having a facilitator is very important because everyone is coming from a different perspective. It's helpful to have one person whose point of view is going to be what it is we're trying to do and keeping that front and center, as well as guiding us to make sure that we don't get off track. You know, there's a lot of valuable information that's going to come from all of the people who are participating on the, on the Steering Committee, as well as any of those members from the public as those meetings, as those meetings move forward. But the, but the end result has to be, what is it that we're trying to do so that we can actually get there? There are so many different conversations we could have and people have different experiences from when they lived somewhere else or when they visited another country or whatever it is. And you don't want to short circuit someone or, or end up discounting someone's experience. However, there has to be a balance so that we can do the work that we've been assigned to do and get to the end of that and make sure that we have a product that, that the Steering Committee is proud of, that the City Council is in agreement with, and something that can move forward and represent the city going forward. To add to that, I did meet with Mr. Ges last week. Due to health reasons, I was unable to come to the initial meeting where he spoke with the other members of the committee that were here. I feel very comfortable with him. We had a really good conversation. The questions he asked would have been questions I would have asked him if he didn't ask me. So I, I don't feel as though we shouldn't have a facilitator. I'm in full agreement that we should have a facilitator, as well as I feel confident in, in Mr. Ges and his work. And then if the city staff have looked at the long list of companies that he's worked with, I don't have a problem with that at all. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, actually, that was very similar to what I was going to ask you. You know, knowing a little bit about your background and I know I had first met you at the DMV listening session and it was being facilitated by John Marasco and, and it was wonderful and it was inspiring. And I look to you as, you know, you are so well-connected, you know, at the state level, you were sharing the toolkit for schools, so you have a lot of knowledge of this area. So I would look to you for having better information, I think, than Mr. Ges. So I'm just, why do you think that the committee could not do it without him?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Brown. I don't think it's that we are unable to do this, right? But in order to do the reporting and the work that needs to come out of it, the written work and formulating all of that, as well as making sure that we are coloring inside the lines, if you will, to make sure that we are formulating everything correctly, that we have all of the elements. Because if each person is coming from a particular point of view, there's a, there is a standard of what this work looks like on paper, right? And there's a way to teach, there's a way to train, there's a way to write up the information and, and make sure that it is something that can be shared from person to person. So what we may end up with is a training manual of sorts. And that would be a tremendous amount of work for the volunteer committee, which means that it would fall on the Chair to do the work, right? And so I would need help doing that work. And I take that on because that's the role, right? You do what you need to do to get the job done. However, to have someone who is expert at this, can I do it? Absolutely. I'm really smart and I'm very cool.
Absolutely.
However, thank you. However, to have someone who, this is their nine to five job and it wouldn't be my five to nine job, that would be a great benefit to the city and it would be done during his business hours to make sure that you all have what you need from the committee and that we can look through the nuts and bolts and make sure everything is, is where it should be. So that is why I think a facilitator would be better, we'd be better suited to have that to help us.
Any other questions for Ms. Malakai? I have one, Your Honor.
Yes.
Thank you. And please be brief, but, well, I mean that respectfully. Counselor Brown and others are familiar with your background. I am not. Could you just share a little bit of your biography?
There's so many things I've been doing.
You made it clear, be brief.
Let's see. My day job, I work for the state. I'm the Executive Director for the New Hampshire Commission for Human Rights. And what the Commission does is it enforces New Hampshire's laws against discrimination. We focus on housing, employment, excuse me, yes, housing, employment, public accommodation. And I know I'm forgetting one. I've been out of work for a little while because of a health situation. I usually have this down cold, but today was the first day back, so please forgive me. Along with that, I was also the Chair of the Governor's Advisory Council on Diversity and Inclusion. That council has since disbanded since we have a new governor coming in so that that governor can decide what her core items are that she would like to work with, work on. I have worked with the Department of Justice and facilitated conversations. I've worked with, what else? Juvenile justice areas, so a variety of things.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Ms. Malakai?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me add my thanks. When I called you and asked you if you would do this, I'm deeply grateful that you agreed to chair the Steering Committee.
And I appreciate you asking me to, to do that and thank you all because you had to make the decision and to vote. So I appreciate your vote of confidence. It's not wasted and I clearly understand that there is work to be done and we'll make sure that we get it done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This moves us to the public, public hearing action phase, the action phase of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, item 27.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV, Zoning Code, Chapter 28, Zoning Ordinance, to further revise certain provisions which were previously modified in August of 2024 pertaining to conditional use permits for obstruction of the State House dome and maximum height limitations in certain portions of the Central Business Performance District and the Opportunity Quarter Performance District.
Thank you. Approval?
Move approval.
Approval moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to thank you actually for making the motion to return this item to the, to the Planning Board for further review and discussion in light of the comments that were received. I think that the end product now that we have before us that we're voting on now is, is improved, much greatly improved. And I, and I also want to thank Mr. Walsh. I think this was a Herculean effort on his part and he has come through and delivered a, a product that I think is, has been much improved also. So just appreciation to, to both of you for that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fantasy.
Thank you. I want to echo some of the comments that Counselor Todd made. I wasn't sure that we needed to send this back to the Planning Board and I had a few people grumble to me that we did, but I do think that the product that we have in front of us is much improved. There's a, a number of areas that I think were, could have been potentially problematic and I think the additional time that the Planning Board spent on it has improved, improved the guidelines that they will have moving forward and I think it will be beneficial to us in the long run.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Counselor Brown.
Yes, I've also heard from others that they are pleased with the result from coming out of Planning Board and also encouragement that we focus on our historic downtown when we craft the master plan.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it. Madam City Clerk, item number 28.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title V, Administrative Code, Chapter 35, Classification and Compensation Plan, Scheduled for an Election Specialist.
Move approval.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Todd.
Yeah, I think just briefly, I, I always like to take an opportunity to thank our City Clerk for all the wonderful work she does on these elections. I think this is a very important item. We want to, it's obviously something, it's one of the more important things we do in the city really, along with the budget. So I think this, this ordinance makes sense and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, I said my comment earlier. All right, yes, you did. All right. Did I? I'll just briefly say that, you know, in my official capacity, I visit the City Clerk's office much more frequently than I used to. And when you witness firsthand, as I think Counselor Seku mentioned, when you've witnessed firsthand the amount of work that she and her small staff do for the people of the City of Concord and for our electoral process, not to mention the marriage licenses and the people looking for birth certificates and the dogs and all of that, we, we really, we really are blessed with having an excellent, excellent City Clerk's office.
And the questions from new counselors as well.
And the questions, yes.
She's carried a heavy burden in the past year on that front.
That's what's adding to every decision. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it. Madam City Clerk, item number 29.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $17,265 to assist the library's mission in providing a variety of equitable services to patient, patrons- It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $17,265 to assist the library's mission in providing a variety of equitable services to patrons of the Concord Public Library, and accepting the sum of $17,265 in donations for this purpose.
Move of second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counsel Brown?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I'm recusing myself because it is my great pleasure to work for this organization.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 13 also had an item from the Concord Library Foundation. Can we?
I don't believe it was from the Library Foundation.
The Bagan grant from the Concord Library Foundation, $1,000.
I think that came from the Bagan Foundation.
The report says.
Was this on the consent calendar?
Yes, sir.
It's, I think that's, I think, let's move forward with this work. Thank you. All right. Are we ready for the question?
Yes.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. Madam City Clerk, item 30.
It is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for grant funds in the sum of $750,000 to the Community Development Block Grant Fund Program, appropriating the sum of $750,000 to support Ketch neighborhood housing's redevelopment at 30 East Side Drive, and accepting the sum of $750,000 in community development block grant funds for this purpose.
Move of approval. Second.
Item moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. Madam City Clerk, item number 31.
It is a resolution adopting the anti-displacement and relocation policy statement and procedures in support of the city's community development block grant application to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority to support Ketch neighborhood housing's redevelopment project at 30 East Side Drive.
Move of approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. Madam City Clerk, item 32.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $3,049,000 as a transfer to reserves and authorizing the use of $3,049,000 from fiscal year 2024 general fund assigned fund balance for this purpose.
Move of approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counsel Brown?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment that for the Economic Development Reserve, instead of it being 300, that there be another reserve for workforce development. I know from different conferences that we've attended, the New Hampshire SONGA Conference, looking at how we can strengthen our workforce, and having funds dedicated to do that will absolutely support our economic development. So I saw it at the Subcommittee of Economic Development, and I know that I think it's 180 has been earmarked within this 300. So I would like us to consider 100,000 for a workforce development reserve.
Is there a second? All right, not here any second, the motion fails. Counselor, I will say that I think that, you know, if counsel so chooses, your goal would be accommodated by the existing Economic Development Reserve Fund, because I believe that, for example, the SONGA Conference is an economic development event. Now, I will say, SONGA is a statewide event that's held here in Concord, so I think we need to be cognizant of that.
Right.
But I think that the money that this, that this motion would allocate to the Economic Reserve Fund could possibly be a source.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Counsel Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. And to that point, I would support that effort. But I think the more we start carving up the reserve, the more restricted the money gets. So I think if we leave broader, bigger pots, it gives counsel much more flexibility. So I think it's a great idea, but I think it's the more effective way to accomplish it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Kurtz.
Thank you, Counselor Keach. I was trying to figure out how to say something similar, which was that I think it's a good idea, but I don't quite know what it would look like. So thank you, because I do think it's a worthy pursuit, and knowing that we could use that money for sort of a specific proposal or something that came for, for that sort of work.
As I just heard, I'm smart and good-looking. You want to hear?
Counsel Fantasy.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the city manager for finance, his staff, all the members of city staff, who I think did an excellent job with the budget last year, coming through with a surplus. Once again, it's fabulous. I know it took a lot of hard work from a lot of different people. Seeing, you know, in particular, our special revenue funds, all performing much better than they were budgeted to, I think is something that we should be very proud of. And thank you all, and I'm sure you're working very hard on the next budget.
I would just like to second the comment of the chair of the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee. There's a reason our finance department continuously receives financial excellence and financial management awards, and it is because of the fine work of Mr. LeBrun and his staff. So thank you, Mr. Fantasy. Counsel Fantasy. Any other comments or?
Here.
Counsel, thank you. Counsel Seku.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say what every second everybody's thought about community development and having that flexibility. I think what you just mentioned, Counsel Brown, it's a great idea, but knowing that the funds is there for what is needed in the global community development, I think is great. So thank you.
Great. Are we ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. Madam City Clerk, item number 33.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $54,000 in the general fund for furniture, equipment, and training, and authorizing the use of $54,000 in reserve funds for this purpose.
Move of approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. I'm sorry, these all, the last several have been by the necessary two-thirds majority. Item number 35, Madam City Clerk.
34? 34.
34, I'm sorry, I crossed it off. Sorry. 34.
Resolution appropriating the sum of $150,000 for the Concord Public Library chilling unit replacement sub-project, and authorizing the use of issuance of bonds and notes in the amount of $150,000 for this purpose.
Move of approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. Now, item 35, Madam City Clerk.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $40,000 for conducting illegal drug-related investigations, and accepting the sum of $40,000 in grant funding from the New Hampshire Department of Safety for this purpose.
Move of approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counsel Brown?
Yes, I'm recusing myself from this and the next item for the same reasons I mentioned earlier.
Counsel Brown accuses herself from item 35 and item 36 because her husband is a police officer in the department. All right, thank you. Are we ready for the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it by the required two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item number 36.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $16,000 for the purchase of equipment to assist the Concord Police Department and Central New Hampshire Special Operations Unit in search and rescue operations, and accepting the sum of $16,000 in grant funds from the New Hampshire Department of Safety for this purpose.
Move of approval. Second.
The item is moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The eyes have it, the motion passes by the required two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item number 37.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $40,000 in the general fund for diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, and belonging work, and authorizing the use of $40,000 from the general fund unassigned fund balance for this purpose.
Move of approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Counsel Horn.
I would echo some of the comments by Counselor Keach from earlier, that I think it's very, very important work. I think we need to do it. My pause is sending our tax dollars to Texas. I don't feel comfortable with paying somebody in Texas. I think the societally, the climate, things are just a lot different there, and I don't feel comfortable that they know the issues that are happening in Concord.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, Counsel Brown.
Yes, I would echo Counselor Horn's hesitation. Texas is very different from New Hampshire. I do feel better that Ms. Malakai has spoken with Mr. Guest about this, a little bit better, but I was uncomfortable that almost half of the committee wasn't present to meet with him, there were technical difficulties. I see it as difficult having a facilitator from Texas. Here, I would prefer, I understand the need for a facilitator. However, I would prefer to see this, these funds go towards someone in New Hampshire, preferably Concord. Actually, preferably, I would love to see it be our social worker or another social worker who is affiliated with the city, because then I see that as a continuation of this process, and not just educating the committee, but doing outreach to our community and meeting with them one-on-one. Some of the comments from the meeting that I heard from those in attendance was that the facilitator thought it would be harder to get people to speak openly because they had done so 20 months ago, and there was no concrete action. So I feel that having someone who is here, part of our community, going and connecting or making headway through the list of items that were identified through those three listening sessions would be a good start. I would be in favor of having a facilitator, a local facilitator for those conversations, compiling that information, perhaps using Mr. Guest for the municipal planning, since he is working with different municipalities for something a little bit more specific. But I want to thank Ms. Malakai for her testimony, because that made me feel a lot better about the need for a facilitator. I still am not convinced that it has to be Mr. Guest.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel, great to talk to you.
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. I also have some very significant reservations with this particular plan and proposal. I don't support it as written. I think that DEI JB work is absolutely critical, and I appreciate all the work that the current committee has done, all the planning that's been laid out here. But I've spent the last two decades in my professional career working to create more just and equitable communities. And over, I'd say since 2020, I've been able to undergo pretty extensive DEI training, again, in my professional career and a bit through my work here on the council as well. And one thing that I've found personally over the years is that facilitators and consultants have a very difficult time sort of moving the dial on DEI or DEI JB work, especially because, as Counselor Horn said, each community is, looks so different to one another. I think a plan for DEI JB work in Concord would look very different to one that would be, for instance, in, you know, the city of Berlin, New Hampshire. And so, and I also think that in some ways, facilitator, well, not facilitators, but consultants that are doing this work often provide a way for corporations and organizations, as well as governmental bodies certainly just certain, check the box on this issue, instead of really rolling up our sleeves as a community to do the really difficult work that's necessary to create equitable communities. And I think luckily, we have an extraordinary group that's been brought together by the mayor and members of the committee, that, you know, there's a group of 18 extraordinary leaders around the community with diverse backgrounds, and I think they are the key to doing this work and to creating buy-in from the community, not a $25,000 out-of-state consultant. And so I would urge the committee to continue to do this work. I can vouch personally that Ms. Malakai is both very smart and very cool, and I have a lot of faith that she can continue to lead this effort and perhaps have some staff support for doing the reporting. But I just don't think that focus groups and the cost of $15,000 a year and out-of-state consultants is going to get us to the equitable and more diverse and welcoming Concord that I think we all want to see.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McAdams.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do appreciate that we have a neutral party coming, not from New Hampshire. It'd be nice to have stuff from New Hampshire, but I do appreciate that he's coming from not New Hampshire, and he probably brings greater depth, clearer eyes, open view, to get to learn who and what we are, instead of coming with preconceived ideas. I do appreciate that. I think that that is fresh eyes, and I think that could be a really good thing. Not surprised at all that an anti-progressive New Hampshire Journal would come out with this article, as they did. I think I would expect that. And I think I appreciate the time, and I respect the interview process that this committee has gone through. And I'm hearing the committee say, we could do it, but we need help. So because I've heard the committee be honest, and they're the experts right now, because they've spent a lot of time in this, I respect them, and I'm going to support what they need. And I think this is the avenue that's going to give that support.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Creditink.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate your comments and the comments at the previous counselors. Were we in a perfect world, we could have handpicked a counsel, a consultant for this project. We can't. We're a municipal entity. That means we have to go out for an RFP, RFQ process. If in a perfect world, there were consultants in New Hampshire that wanted this role, they could have applied for it. They did not. The limited number of proposals that we had in front of us gave the process that we had a very small, narrow view. What Mr. Espell didn't explain earlier is that all of our processes, when it comes to an RFP, RFQ process, are prescribed. There's a document. You can do this, 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 this. It's based on state law, it's based on federal law, it's based on our own policies that we have. It was prescribed. We come together, we have a conversation about the proposals, we do ranking. Ranking is not subjective. We say, Mr. City Manager, your team, please go forth. Questions? Everybody gets the same. It's prescribed. They do their review, there's a score. There's an end score. This was the top consultant. When Counselor Seku says that he supports this consultant 100%, it's because we saw all of the process, and it's prescribed. When we introduce an outside force, an article, comments from the community about someone not being from our community, those are things Mr. City Manager's team can't look at. It introduces implicit bias. And then it opens us up to bigger can of worms than us saying, we followed a prescribed process, this is what the state law says, the federal law, our process is internally, and we did everything by the book. If I were in a job interview, or even I applied for a job, and someone Googled my name, lawsuit, guess why? I'm a protected class, because I'm a female, I'm over 40 years old, and all of a sudden you have a discrimination lawsuit on your hands. We don't make decisions like this. And as far as an outside view, we are focusing on one person who happens to be the lead facilitator of a team. No proposal that sat in front of us contained only one individual on it. There are a team of individuals to dive into the data and the conversations that happen, the facilitated conversations within our community, and they present data back to the committee to dispel, throw out, up, whatever way you want to do it. But it's a process. We asked people to sit at the table on this committee for DEI JB to be the person that would represent the marginalized communities that exist in our community today. If you asked them, hey, do you want to be the only voice for those individuals in our community that are LGBTQ plus-plus-plus, or that you are the Asian, that you are black, that you are African-American, New American, immigrant community, disabled? They're going to say, no, I kind of thought I was coming here so that I could bring that community to you for this facilitated conversation. That's why we have focus groups, so that in a close meeting, like-minded individuals experiencing the same discrepancies of equity within our community can tell us where we fail. And ultimately, this is not about how the city's process is, we already have that consultant. This is about our boards and committees. Do we have true representation on this board or any board? Do we have members from our LGBTQ community? Do we have members from our New American communities? our New American communities that are U.S. citizens? Do we have members that are disabled that are able to attend our committee meetings and give us feedback that we need in order to make our boards, our committees reflect the microcosm that we are in the entirety of our community? Or are we constantly filling people with the same members of us that are sitting around this table? Because ultimately, right now, we make that decision. Thank you for the long moment.
Yeah, I took a breath. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the comments that were made tonight, especially with regard to our Human Resources Department, because I think we all in the city are very fortunate to have a very talented group of people working in human resources. And I could see where there'd be definitely a tendency to want to go that route here. But I think also, as was pointed out, there's a bandwidth issue here. This is not a, if this were a project that we're going to take a couple of hours, I would say, oh, well, maybe, yeah, it certainly makes sense. Why are we hiring consultants? But I think that to get a good working product out of this, it's going to take a much more significant amount of time than that. So it's just not practical to have our Human Resources Department do this. And I think for the same reasons, it's not really practical to have our volunteers on the committee put their time and effort into, into working on an actual end product that we'd be able to use. And I think they're very talented, but I think that having a consultant would benefit the end product that would ultimately be used down the road. Also, just generally, when we, personally, for me as a counselor, when I hear recommendations from a committee, I put a lot of weight on those recommendations. I think that I kind of view the committees as experts in those areas. That's why we have these committees set up so that they can provide us with their best expert advice. So when they're coming here and saying, this is our recommendation, I do put a lot of weight on that. My experience with, I have to agree with Counselor Mcnamara here, my experience with out-of-state facilitators is that because they are out of state, they actually have an advantage. So they don't have any preconceived notions. So they're actually forced to ask a lot of the tough questions and ask more questions and be more inquisitive in order to get the end product that they're, they're being hired to produce. So in this particular instance, isn't that exactly what we want, especially for this particular subject matter? We want to make sure that we can dig down deep and, and ask those difficult questions without any preconceived notions. So in that instance, I think that an out-of-state, an out-of-state person is actually maybe preferable in this case. I've certainly had lots of experience going all the way back to the days of Concord 2020, which was a real grassroots effort by the community to try to get in deep. And they hired an out-of-state consultant to do it. And I think there were some questions at the time. Well, who's this, is this entity really going to know? They're not going to know Concord. They're not going to know our community. But they got to learn along the way, and they were able to facilitate a great process on that project, just as one example. And I also, I want to say that I agree with Ms. Malakai, that having a deliverable that is permanent out of this is, I just want to note that that's going to be really important going forward. Having some kind of, as she suggested, training module that can live beyond the life of committee members is another important element. And I can see, again, having a consultant that has experience doing that, putting together something like that would be an advantage as well. So for those reasons, I'm going to support this item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Very well. I'll put it to the vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Ayes have it by the required two-thirds majority. Mr. City Man, thank you all for that, by the way, thank you all for that terrific discussion of an important, really important initiative for the city. I appreciate everyone's perspective, and I appreciate your involvement and your engagement and your passion about this. So thank you. Mr. City Manager, this takes us to reports.
I'd like to ask Mr. Walsh to come forward.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. I am here tonight to proudly present to you your Housing Champion designation from the state of New Hampshire. Woo! Well deserved. So just a couple of quick comments, because this is a good opportunity to explain how we earned this prestigious recognition. This was awarded to the city on December 17th. Mayor Champlin attended, along with the city manager and I, to accept that award. Quote from the award letter, "This prestigious recognition is a testament to your community's outstanding commitment to fostering an environment that supports innovative and sustainable solutions to address New Hampshire's housing needs. The city's efforts have demonstrated leadership and vision in creating pathways for housing development that will positively impact residents and contribute to solving the state's housing crisis." That is from our award letter. So just by way of background, really quickly, there are 234 communities, municipalities in New Hampshire. Fun fact, there are 13 cities, 221 towns. Using a comprehensive application process, the state selected 18 communities to be, designated as housing champions. It's less than 8% of the communities in the state. Nine of them were cities, coincidentally, including Concord. The only other community in central New Hampshire that got this designation was the town of Bosquen. So I think that's important to recognize, since housing is a regional issue, the city cannot solve housing issues in central New Hampshire by itself. So it was nice to see Bosquen stepping up to do that. Our application really quickly was successful because we were able to demonstrate compliance with state law RSA 67459, which is the state's workforce housing statute. We were able to demonstrate that there are reasonable, and I would say ample, opportunities to develop workforce housing under the city's current zoning and land use regulations. So that's part one. Part two, we were able to demonstrate that housing is welcomed and easy to develop in Concord. As the council knows, we have zoning districts. We have 17 different zoning districts in our community. Housing is permitted in 14 of them. And when you look at that on a land area basis, that means housing is permitted in just about 95% of Concord's land area, which is 60.2 square miles of our total 64 square miles of land. So I think that's an important thing to emphasize here. We were, in addition, we were successful because the city has adopted innovative land use regulations in accordance with state law RSA 674:21. Some of those regulations include the Cluster Development Ordinance, which is a different way to do subdivisions, Planned Unit Developments, which is a way to do site plans with housing, with a mix of housing uses, as well as conditional use permits, which you all know about because you approved some changes to them tonight for the downtown and opportunity corridor areas. We also allow, under part of our zoning ordinance, the development of manufactured housing, including manufactured housing parks and subdivisions, as well as mixed-use development. The city was also selected because of the council's unwavering commitment to make investments in our water, sewer, and transportation infrastructure, as noted in your capital improvement program. The Heights Sewer Project is one of those. In addition, you were selected because the city has a complete street policy and promotes walkable neighborhoods. It was one of the state's criteria. You also have intermunicipal agreements about utilities with neighboring communities. So that was one of the factors. As you all know, with 2,352 units of housing that are currently in development here in town, you are a leader on housing, not just in central New Hampshire, but really the state of New Hampshire. And you're also a leader on affordable housing. And just a quick note here, there's been a lot of discussion about the statewide Housing Needs Assessment that was done by New Hampshire Housing Finance. The report that I would point to is the 2023 Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission's Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And that is prepared by the commission in accordance with state law RSA 36:47-2 to help communities craft appropriate policy to stay within other statutory requirements about housing that the state has set down. And I would note a couple of facts to you. Concord's population equates to about 36.5% of the total population in the region, which is 20 communities, including Concord. Concord has just under 38% of the total housing stock in the region. And with those two statistics in mind, Concord has just about 58% of all the income-restricted or affordable housing units in central New Hampshire. So you're doing well beyond what other communities are doing. I would also note that there are eight communities in, eight of the 20 communities within the central New Hampshire Regional Planning Territory have no, no income-restricted units. And those communities are Bradford, Chichester, Deering, Dunbarton, Loudon, Salisbury, Sutton, and Webster. Those are communities that should be targeted by affordable housing developers and for-profit housing developers to build income-restricted housing. And I would also note, since those statistics were put down, we have built another 373 units of income-restricted housing here in Concord and another 132 units are on the way. So we're doing our fair share and then some. And when you look at the 2,352 units of housing that we have in production right now, that will expand our population by about 5,400 people, that is enough to satisfy what the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission has said in total unit count that the city should be trying to achieve by 2030 and then some. So you're well ahead of where your goals are in accordance with the housing, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. As demonstrated tonight, Concord, you know, with the city's setting up acceptance of funds from the Invest New Hampshire Grant Program for next month's public hearing to support Next Step Living, as well as what you did tonight relative to Catch Neighborhood Housing and CDBG, the city is a leader in using all available tools in the toolbox to help get housing done through innovative and creative partnerships. And we try to get that housing done in accordance with our land use regulations and the goals of our 2030 master plan. And just to reiterate, some of the tools that you've used at the local level, which is also why we were designated as a housing champion, you have sold city-owned real estate for housing development, both market rate and affordable. You have used the RSA 79 E-Community Tax Relief Incentive Program to develop 122 units of housing since we adopted it in 2008. You have used investments through your tax increment finance districts, the three of them that you have right now, to foster developing housing projects in those three districts. You have used the city's revolving loan fund program to make investments in housing projects, including the Remi Block, the Endicott Hotel, and Penne Cook Landing. And of course, you're using Community Development Block Grants in the Invest New Hampshire Program, as you know. As a housing champion, the city, along with the other 17 communities that were designated, will be eligible to apply for housing production municipal grant fund grants, which there's $1,005 allocated for that by the state of New Hampshire. We're also eligible to apply for housing infrastructure municipal grant program funds. Another $3.5 million has been allocated for that, so a total of $5 million. We look forward to accessing those resources with our community partners like Catch and others to support additional housing projects here in Concord as opportunities might arise. So summary, this award recognizes the city's commitment to housing, the steps we have collectively taken to do Concord's part to address the regions and state's housing needs. We should take great pride in being recognized, recognized by the state for this commitment and doing our part in towards, and frankly, being involved in the right thing. We will take this and display it somewhere proudly in City Hall, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any questions? Counselor Schlosser.
Well, I'd just like to acknowledge, I think I saw the application on your desk before I went in. So I just want to acknowledge your work and the work of the staff to put that application together. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome. It was about four inches of paper. That is not unusual. But we're happy to do it.
Hey, Counselor Schlosser, you lead to a point that I wanted to make, which is that it's not just the good decisions, sometimes the difficult decisions that this council has made that has led to this award, but also the very hard work of our city staff, you know, Mr. Walsh and his planning department or his economic development, community development department.
All 38, all 38 of us in the community development department.
Exactly.
Exactly. You're very welcome.
That's exactly what I was trying to say. Any other comments?
I just, I just want to say thank you, because as you said, we'll take it with honor. And thank you for the excellent job that you guys have done. I haven't, I work in the housing market. I haven't heard about it until I saw the picture on Facebook. Your honor said, okay, we are honored. I said, I wish we knew. As City Council, as you said, of course, it takes tough work, but City Council also to approve those, that they are aware of those good, excellent things that are coming up. So please, going forward, make us aware, because I think it's important for all of you guys that are doing an excellent work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Very good. That brings us to items pulled from the consent calendar for agenda, rather. Madam City Clerk, item number 15.
It was pulled from the consent agenda by Counselor Brown. It is a fiscal year 2024 annual comprehensive report from the Assistant Finance Director.
Thank you. Counselor Brown, do you wish to speak?
Yes, yes. And I just want to acknowledge Mr. LeBrun for this report and for sitting and explaining things with me and in my conversations with constituents and residents, that it is tough to get through this document to truly understand our budget and finances and taxes. And people are opening their tax bills and really concerned and asking, where is my money going? Why is there this increase? So there are misconceptions. Some people are saying, you know, well, this, this fund makes tons of money. And it was through my conversations with Mr. LeBrun and identifying the currently outstanding general obligation bonds, I had asked Mr. LeBrun, they were on page 65 of the annual comprehensive financial report, 18 different funds, different amounts, and different years that they're due. There is quite a number of them that are dedicated to the golf course that I think people aren't aware of. They may say, oh, the golf course is, is bringing out, is, there's a surplus. But in fact, there are obligation, general obligation bonds that are not paid, that are not due. They don't mature until 2044, 2043, 2042. And I would just request that in the future, that the public improvements, those bonds are listed with a title so that we can see exactly what those bonds are. That would be helpful for folks who are looking at this to see what outstanding bonds we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Would you like to make a motion?
Oh, I make a motion to accept the report.
Second that. Save me a second. Any further discussion?
Well, clarification. So accepting the report is simply accepting the report?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, okay.
Right.
Let me make sure.
Oh, sorry. Then I would like to say, in the, could I say, in the future, that I would like the public improvements to be listed, rather than just simply stating.
That's a motion with a, a second and an action.
A motion, yes.
Okay. Are you making a motion?
I make a motion that the public improvements be listed for what the bonds actually are in, going forward in future annual financial comprehensive reports, rather than simply under the title Public Improvements.
Ms. LeBrun, we have a motion made, but one second. Mr. LeBrun, put his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This, this document that we have is, it's developed and it's put together in accordance with the auditing standards. And so to say that we're going to go through, and I sent you a list of, I think it was probably about eight pages long of all the different bonds, however many pages it was of all the different bonds, those aren't the types of things that are put into the document like this. This is a different type of document. This document is used as the, it's called the annual comprehensive financial report, and it is used by rating agencies and other agencies in a systematic or in a format that's very similar to all other documents like this. If you would like us to continue to provide you with that list of breakdown of all those, we can do that. But to put it in this kind of a document is totally not really appropriate for what we would do.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. It is helpful for me to understand what each of these bonds are. So I would like that if it were, to be provided to us as an attachment.
Well, we wouldn't do it as an attachment to that document.
To the council.
We can give you, we can give you the council, and we're going to go out to bond in February, and we can give you a list of all the items that we're bonding. I mean, that's absolutely no problem at all. The city council approves every one of those projects during the budget process. We can't go and do any of that stuff unless you ask for it. It's this document really just not, that's the wrong place for it.
Okay.
And Mr. LeBrun, am I correct that this document is put together by our auditor as part of our annual audit?
It is, it is put together by us as part of annual audit. You know, they tell us it's our document. It's our financial statements, but it's.
They follow standard procedures, correct?
It's a standard procedure. Yes, it is.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Then I'm fine with accepting the report.
Retray your motion?
Yes, I retract my motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready for the question?
My question, yeah.
I'm sorry. We, we.
There was a second.
There was a second. Thank you. All those in favor, please, the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. That brings us, let me get back to my agenda. Sorry. I think that brings us to comments by city council. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
You are correct.
All right. Let's go around the table this way. Counselor Creditin.
Thank you, Your Honor. February 2nd, not just Groundhog Day. It is Ski the Beeve, Learn to Ski Program at Beaver Meadow. There is a rain slash no-sono date of February 9th, just in case. It includes a 5K race. It's either competitive or non-competitive, depending on how you want to manage that race and your own skill set. There are. There are kids' races that are being run by the Bill Koch League, that's the league that operates at the golf course on Friday nights, for little ones, three years old, all the way through eighth grade. The Learn to Ski sessions, there's going to be two of them. I know councillor Seku, last year you said you were going to attend with me, so I'm kind of counting on you this year.
I'm going to.
There is also free equipment that is provided for the Learn to Ski. This is being supported by SNW Sports, which of course is our ski vendor that we have in our ski business that's in our community. There'll be other vendors with other equipment, in case you want to purchase, you can test it out.
I just want to say, you just said 40 years and older are senior. I don't want to break my fit, because I'm in.
No, 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 it's breaking your ego, that's really what it's all about. Special thanks to David Gill and the Parks and Recreation Department, because they really do run the operations during the winter months. Our very own Dennis Murray, he runs the groomer for us. He is a member of the staff at the golf course, but splits his time in the winter in order to run the groomer. There's also, Northeast Delta Dental is sponsoring this event, and of course, we'd be remiss if we didn't congratulate and welcome our new small business owner at Beaver Meadow, which is Emily Duklos. She just opened up the Broken Tea, she'll be serving hot chocolate and other goodies to everybody at the event that is February 9th. That's the rain-snow day. February 2nd, and hopefully the Groundhog keeps the snow.
Snow's going to be here, so that was.
Got it. All day at the Beeve, thank you. Come and enjoy our land.
Councillor McNamara.
The 22nd Annual Art and Bloom, put on by Concord Garden Club, will be happening again at the Kimball Jenkins Estate. It'll be Thursday, January 23rd, the show opens at 2:00 to 5:00, and then Friday, 10:00 to 6:00, and Saturday, 10:00 to 4:00. The theme this year is "The Invincible Within." This is really extraordinary. It's about, all the artwork is from women, New Hampshire women artists, and this time of the year, if you want to have some joy and color and really beauty and art, go and see what some of our community members have created to duplicate these art pieces. So it suggested donation is $10, and it'll be happening starting in that weekend.
Thank you, councillor Brown.
Yes, so January is a time for starting something new, and I just want to hype the Ultimate Book Nerd Challenge from the library. It doesn't matter if there's snow on the ground or if it's raining, you don't have to have any equipment, you can go in, you can use your library card or not. But it's just choosing, it's a challenge to read five books in categories that the librarians have selected. I did this last year, 2024, and four librarians suggested four different books. They were all fantastic. It opens your mind, and it's a safe way to explore a different area that you might not be familiar or even comfortable with. So I think everyone should give it a shot. Ultimate Book Nerd, grab your sheet at the library.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kurtz.
Thank you. I just want to plug Parks and Rec program, the sports play arts recreation and community club, started last weekend, or two weekends ago, I apologize, I got to volunteer last Saturday and see in action free drop-in activities for all Concord kiddos. It runs every weekend through early March, Saturdays, excuse me, through the end of March, Saturdays from 2:00 to 5:30, and Sundays, same hours, from 2:00 to 4:00. Families with, and youth of all ages are welcome. Ages 10 and up can be unaccompanied, younger kids need a grown-up stay in the building. And then from 4:15 to 5:30, kids 10 to 15 years old get to spread their things a little bit without any grown-ups around to supervise. Parks and Rec has done a phenomenal job hiring some really wonderful teen staff members, and it's really incredible to watch the oldest kids in our community, you know, perhaps in their first jobs, working with some of the younger kids in our communities, playing in the gym, doing any kinds of games and crafts. And I just encourage all of you to go outside, then pick up a library book, and then swing by Parks and Rec. I don't want to detract from any of the other awesome programs, but it's an option, and it's free, and no pre-registration is required. So I hope to see you there.
Councillor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to thank Deputy Chief Moulton with the Concord PD, and Nicole, our social worker, also with the PD. They just are extraordinary and went above and beyond to assist a unhoused member of our community, and I am very, very grateful for them, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Fantasy.
Thank you. Two things, one, I've been encouraged to remind everybody that Annie will be at the Capitol Center for the Arts Friday and Saturday. I thought some people would be to the punch here, but it's a professional performance along with many members of the community, some people you may know. So if you can, get out there. Tickets are going fast, I just checked the website, but they're still available. The second thing I had was all of our ponds, or our ice skating is available right now through Parks and Rec, so White Pond, Beaver Meadow, the skating area at Rollins Park are all, and I just checked the 10-day forecast, next Saturday looks a little eh, but other than that, I think it's going to be cold for a while, so hopefully we'll be skating for a couple of weeks. I know there was a lot of action at the White Park Pond yesterday, so get out there and enjoy it while we can. I think we had one day of skating last year, so take advantage.
Councillor Schlosser.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge what councillor Grady Sexton said about our police department helping homeless people, and I think our fire department also is making special care. I also want to just note that several of our social service agencies, the Friendly Kitchen, the Bellknap Merrimack Cap Agency, and the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness, this week extended their hours to make sure that our homeless residents had a safe place to stay during the cold weather. So I appreciate the work of those social service agencies.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Second.
Thank you, your honor. We are in January, and January 20th is Martin Luther King Day. There is some amazing event throughout, I won't say Concord, but throughout the state. So please, if you are looking to learn Concord at the Memorial High School, they have a great event, and those events are put by community members and people of nonprofit organizations, and there will be a lot of awards and learning, there is some groups, breakout sessions at the Manchester Memorial High School. On top of that, I just want to take this opportunity to express my gratitude. I know DEI work, it's a complex work. We are all in it in any capacity. And I also want to say that the group that we put together, of course, we are a CD of 44, it's hard to have everybody on a committee, but we did, or the mayor did his best. We are missing some voices for sure, but the social groups that represent today, the DEI JB, I can share with you guys, from faith groups that you all know, to our LGBT groups, to the black community, whatever it is, really, I will say that the social group that I represented, I'm looking forward to see this work. And I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of them, and thank you to Annie for the great work you did and testifying for the need of this, and I'm looking forward to seeing where this take us on. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ford.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Just wanted to mention that I'm very thankful that the Loudon Bridge got repaved. I think the service life of my vehicle may have increased one or two years. I really appreciate that. And again, I want to echo everyone, have a great Martin Luther King Civil Rights Day. And lastly, in East Concord, the infamous Ebenezer Eastman clock is functioning. Some trees that were removed for safety reasons. Many kudos to the folks in the village that took that project on, specifically Chris Miller and Doug Feeney. And also, I think it's important to note that the work that the recreation director, David Gill, did to make this come to fruition, and then I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the outstanding effort by our city manager to make that happen. So thank you very much, and enjoy the holiday.
And I hope we have an Eagle Scout project connected with that. I think maybe we do, but I hope that's the case. I'll just close by saying, first of all, I don't want to be too long, because we do have another non-public session after this. I will just say that as part of our consent calendar, we approved new contracts with four of our unions. I think that was very important work. There is a lot that goes on in terms of the negotiation. Our negotiating team has done a wonderful job negotiating with our unions, and I'm very glad to see that we have approved those four contracts, conveying to our employees their worth, and also positioning us competitively to recruit and retain the best city employees that we possibly can. So thank you for our team, and thank you to the committee, to the council, rather. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn with the caveat that we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll go into non-public session.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Five minutes, and we'll go into non-public.